Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our meeting of the Committee of the Whole for Wednesday, July 22. Call the meeting to order. Are there any declarations of community area interest? Seeing none. We have a motion to accept the agenda. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Noble, that the committee members accepts the agenda of the Committee of the Whole on Wednesday, July 22, 2020. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on, no delegation, staff reports. I have a motion moved by Councilor Wentzink, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number CS 2020-09, Community Services Department Work Plan Update. Hello, Ann, and welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you know, Recreation Department has been impacted by COVID, but we're moving forward on the reopening of our facilities jointly with the Eastern Ontario Health Unit. We have a meeting scheduled with them for July 28 to discuss how to reopen the Dome, the Arena, as well as the Glengarry Sports Palace. In the meantime, as council knows, we reopened the splash pad, the beach, and the bathrooms at Island Park. So those are available to the community to use, even though right now the beach is closed due to a high bacteria count. But I'll come back to that a little later in the report. We have also proceeded with some health and safety issues. COVID does impact how we are going to be working in the workplace, so there's some training that's ongoing with staff. And we've also been updating our health and safety logs, equipment logs, ensuring that everything's up to date. We have proceeded with the filing of the report on the removal of aquatic vegetation at Mill Pond. As council knows, we obtained a permit from the Department of Fisheries and Oceans to remove aquatic vegetation in Mill Pond in 10% of the surface area and only halfway down the column of water. So we report on tonnage, we report on species that are captured and released back into the pond. And we had permission to do so from the 15th of June to the 15th of July, which is actually spawning period. At this time, the report was filed with the DFO, and they're going to use that report as a basis to issue permits again next year. So we do have a very good association with the Race and River Conservation Authority also, who helps us navigate all of the requirements that the DFO puts on us when we are doing that type of work. As council can also see, we have been adjusting-
And just one second, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yeah, thank you. Just a question with regards to the weeds in the pond. I understand that there's only permission for a certain section of the pond to be cleared. And is it because only a certain amount of space is allowed to be cleared? Or is it like, is it your choice where you clear, or is it the ministry's decision where it's cleared?
So we had, prior to filing the permits back in 2018, we had discussions with the ministry regarding what would be acceptable coverage. And they indicated that we had to keep it under 10%. So I think that the triangle of space that we asked for is 9.6%. And it was really to ensure that the areas that are most used by the public are cleared of the weeds. They will not let us clear all of the pond, because of course, their habitat, it's a habitat for aquatic species that are living there. And if we do dredge everything, or we cut too much vegetation, will affect the life cycle of those animals.
Okay, so then you defined the space that was the best to, for the uses, so that the public could use it?
Exactly, and we did that jointly with Eastern Conservation.
Okay, all right, thank, thank you.
So also, as the council knows, that we've been managing staff hours at our different facilities to ensure that there's coverage and that our facilities are inspected regularly. And we have managed to keep staffing levels at very acceptable levels, even though we have expanded the work involved, which is the opening of the beach, as I mentioned, the splash pad and the bathrooms. So we are still rotating the same three park employees, which ensures coverage when all of those activities are ongoing. We had a Community Development Committee meeting, and as you know, we're working presently on our development and marketing strategy. We joined together three workshops that we were supposed to have, and due to low registrations, we only held one virtual workshop. And the plan is to hold an in-person workshop in either late August or September to ensure that we capture the feedback from our residents and from other people in the area, and that we have all the data necessary to be able to make smart decisions with this marketing strategy, this development and marketing strategy. We also had a tax three meeting on the Alexander Main Street. We are, as part of Recreation, we manage Mill Square, and that is also part of the consultation process of the Alexander Main Street. There is going to be a public information consultation period from the 22nd of July until the 5th of August. The designs will be available online. We've already issued the ad in the Glengarry News, as well as emailed the information to all of our community groups. And my understanding is that all the businesses along Main Street that are affected by the designs will be receiving a paper copy of the information on the public consultation. And all of the information is going to be contained there, including the link on where to access the designs. Our events and activities, our Boys and Girls Club Summer Camp has started up in Island Park. And I must say, it's really a pleasure to have some young people using those facilities again. We had limitations as to the size of the group up until last week. Now we are allowed to increase the size, and we were limited to only eight individuals. Now we can go up to 13 individuals. So the Boys and Girls Club were examining how we could lift that threshold to be able to have more individuals registered in summer camp. So they will be there until the 21st of August. They are also using our Dome and our Glengarry Sports Palace Arena slab alternatively to give the children more options of spaces to go to. As you know, our Canada Day activities were postponed this year, but they are scheduled for the 21st of February, which is a Sunday. And we will be speaking with the lead organization on that, which is Alliance Club, on how we can work collaboratively to ensure that it's going to be a wonderful opportunity for our congregation to safely get together at that time. We also had helped out a group that was promoting drive-in movies in North Glengarry, and they used Island Park to offer a drive-in movie on a Saturday evening. And following that exercise, we reoriented them towards the Centre Lock Hill, and they are going to be offering the drive-in movies at that location in the future. It's a little bit darker, so the movies will appear clearer to the patrons that are wanting to view those. Our ice reservation forms are mostly in. Staff is presently juggling the Maxwell and Glengarry Sports Palace scheduling to see what that's going to look like. We are actually going to meeting with the minor hockey associations on the 27th of June, we have, July, pardon me. We have a meeting at 8 o'clock in the morning to discuss what hockey is going to look like in our, both of those facilities. And on the 28th, we have a meeting with the Eastern Ontario Health Unit to specifically discuss the issues that we will have identified during that meeting. So it might be the flow of players, what do change room setups look like, the level of disinfection that has to occur in our facilities. So those are all points that we're going to be discussing. At this point, we still don't have any information from any of the oversight agencies to know if we're going to have, be obligated to have a rest period between ice rentals. So in the past, we have a one-hour period. Users are allowed to use the ice for 15 minutes, we resurface for 10. We're not sure at this point if they're going to require us to have an hour period, and then a rest period of 15 minutes between that. So we're hoping that this week, given the information that was shared by the province and public health last week, that those associations will have had a chance to review their plans, and will be able to come forward with some guidance or some directives for us. Our community centers also have been allowed to reopen, and all of that information was shared to our recreation associations. Some of them have contacted our Water Works Department to ensure that the water systems were started back up in those facilities. As you know, we have continued on with the camera installation at the Glengarry Sports Palace. Island Park, some minor work was done to remove some flower boxes that had deteriorated. Cleaning and disinfection is done on an as-needed basis with the summer camp, as well as a splash pad in the bathroom. We had the replacement of a meter this month, and we have been monitoring the beach. At the time this report was issued, the water levels, the bacteria levels in the water were all acceptable. But as you know, a couple of weeks ago, we had a very large downpour after three weeks basically of dry weather, and the bacteria counts were higher than what would be acceptable. And therefore, we closed the beach. The beach was re-sampled last week, and the sample came in on Saturday, and the Eastern Ontario Health Unit was kind enough to share that information with us. And the bacteria level was still elevated, so the beach at this time does remain closed. Hopefully, with future resampling, we'll be able to reopen the beach shortly. In regards to economic development, our Community Improvement Plan, we've been working closely with different organizations that are looking either to apply or close out some of their CIPs. We'll be bringing a report to council shortly regarding some housekeeping that we have to do to ask for an extension period on one of the projects that's actually going to the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee meet in August. Will go up afterwards. The farmers markets have reopened in Maxwell, and we supported the Easter work with the launch of the virtual farmers market. And I hear from users and from marketeers themselves that this has been extremely successful. We've attended various meetings from ministries regarding different COVID funding or support programs available to individuals, organizations, businesses across the board. So there's been a lot of activity on that front. And economic development activities, as you know, from the start, that department and staff have been very busy supporting our different organizations and our different businesses throughout, with any queries that they have relating to COVID or to how to operate in this type of environment. There are several press releases that have been issued over the last few weeks, including Digital Main Street. The video has, the mayor has shot several videos for graduating class, Pride Month, and as well as to support the development and marketing strategy. There was also the very important Emily Project press release that was issued, and a video that was shot jointly with that. In respect to the website, social media, and traditional media, several ads have been issued. There was a draft clear-cutting bylaw webpage that was created specifically for that project. We keep responding to these regarding, that are posted on Facebook, as well as on our website through our info@northglengarry. And council will be happy to know that, following the communications plan, the different tools that were identified, that we are integrating a search tool into our website. So that should be done within the next three following weeks. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks for your report. Are there any questions from members of the committee? Councilor Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question, Ann, regarding the beach. I know we've got another hot spell coming, this coming up weekend, I think. Any chance that we'll know prior to that, if the levels, do we know when they're going to be testing, that kind of thing?
Yes, they retested on Monday, and usually I would have the information by late day Wednesday or early on Thursday morning.
Okay, so we may, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Noble?
Hey, um, I, one thing, I read some really good reports on the Senspleck Plexa in Ottawa. So if anybody with the arena or any of the minor hockey leagues, they've been, they've been COVIDing since the very beginning. So they would have a very good idea about what's actually necessary and what makes sense, not just what the rules say. And then I was just wondering, I wanted to know with all the programs and everything that were going on with, with all the, the Dome and the arena and everything, is everything back up to running? Like, are all the staff positions back up again, or do we need, and what do you need? Do you need anything?
So, thank you for, that's a very pertinent question. So presently, we're working as SDG, all of the Recreation Departments together as a group with the Eastern Ontario Health Unit. And all of our programs have to be vetted individually, because the yoga program will be run very differently from a nice hockey program. And even ice hockey, different levels will be managed differently. So we're looking at things of how to flow individuals in through the facility so that we have the least possible connectivity together or contact together. So that, that's one of the issues that we're trying to navigate, and we need input from the Eastern Ontario Health Unit. So our main goal in reopening our programs is ensuring that our patrons remain safe, as well as staff remain safe. So with the Dome, we're looking at things like opening up the walking track, opening up the tennis courts. And those have been done outdoors, but we're migrating these indoors. So that poses a whole other set of logistics that we have to manage. So as I mentioned, on the 28th, we have an extensive meeting with the Eastern Ontario Health Unit. We'll have more information. They have kindly prepared a template for us, which greatly facilitates the type of information that we have to supply for them to be able to help us make the decision on whether a program can reopen or not, and in our, under what kind of a format it's going to be reopening. So we will be always going back to council, either through Committee of the Whole or at a council meeting, to let council know how these programs are going to be reopening.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, I will call a vote on accepting the Community Services Department Work Plan. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the Committee of the Whole, I have a resolution moved by Deputy Mayor Williams, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report TR 2020-25, the Director of Finance, Treasure 2020 Work Plan Updated as of July 13, 2020. Unfortunately, our treasure is not here today. But if anybody has any questions from that report, I'm sure our CAO could answer them. Does anybody have any questions on this report? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you. I have a resolution moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number BP 2020-22, the Director of Building Bylaw and Planning 2020 Work Plan. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And so the, the report hasn't changed much from the last Committee of the Whole meeting. Pretty much just updated the numbers, so I guess I'll just go through it quickly. The first one, Maxwell Water Project. So during COVID-19, as mentioned before, we were not preventing the plumbers to go in the house to do the connection to the, to the water system. But there has been, I guess, some kind of a miscommunication or whatever. We weren't getting notified. So we are, we are actually a bit behind on inspections. I have started to give some phone calls to some people to see if we'd be okay to go in and do some inspections, most likely starting next week. Some of them, all good, no problem. Some of them, they don't really want us inside the house for now. So we'll have to evaluate case by case, but there is about, we estimated, Angela was here, we estimated about 100 connections that are completed. We have about 40 that are inspected, so we are, we are behind, but it can go quite, quite quickly, so that shouldn't be that bad. Next thing, building permit application. I didn't get the chance to look at that intensively, but we are looking to get-
If I could just ask, if I could just ask a question, just, I know we had that little bit of an issue between, you know, contractors going in and then notifying the township. I'm just wondering if, has that been taken care of? Are they on par with letting us know when they're going in?
Yeah, yeah, well, like, originally, we had given them sheets to fill out, the meter number and the head number, and they were filling it out, but they, they kept the sheets with them. So anyway, that, that's, that's where the misunderstanding was. Now they are notifying us directly, not, not house by house, but at least it's being done. So we know that if something for the boiling water happens again, we know who's connected. So, yeah, that, we, we talked to the two plumbers who are doing mostly all the connections for now. And yeah, they are, they are on board, you know, what they have to do, just to notify us more, a bit quicker, I guess, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure if I should be asking this question to Jacob or to Doug, because I think it involves maybe multiple departments. But the, and I was talking to Zoe, the administrative assistant, a bit about this as well. Because as you, as you referred to, we, we had, we had some difficulties with our lists, making sure we had a complete list of individuals that were connected in terms of notifying for the boil water. And so, you know, I know you have the, the plumbers, as you said, are now notifying you directly. I'm, I'm just wondering if, I guess what I'm looking for is, is sort of a comprehensive report that, that will, you know, give council, and then, you know, the confidence that, that the system is, 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 is running so that people will get, 100% will get the notification, you know, when they need it, that people will not be missed. And the whole issue of, I'm a little bit concerned with the, the inspection reports, the inspections not being done. As we all know, council members are personally liable for drinking water systems. And so, you know, I think we, you know, I think if we could see a report that is indicating exactly, you know, you know, when these are being inspected, to make sure that they're properly connected and don't have the potential to, you know, infect the rest of the system and that kind of thing. As well as, you know, I spoke to, like I said, Zoe about the possibility of, like, you know, do you just, do you just send a notification to everybody in the community, just to make sure you don't miss anyone? You know, I mean, what is the broader strategy around that? So around those, around those issues, and personally, I would just like to kind of see a report on that, if that's possible.
I agree with Keram. I think that's a great idea to let everyone know, not just those that are hooked up.
Yeah, well, I know Angela brought the list up to date, and yeah, I'll talk to Doug, to Doug and Zoe and Angela, and we, we will work on some kind of a report to, to show council exactly where we are. Yeah, no problem.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Okay, continue.
Thank you. Yeah, so, okay, yeah, building permits, so just a little update. I issued the building permit number 130 this week, and the last year, we issued our 130th permit on July 9. So we are very close to the numbers we had last year, even though there, there was a two, three months holdoff period on permits there, so that's good. The office here, so the main, the main desk where Monique is sitting is completely done. The office is now open to public. It's been running pretty smoothly up to now, a couple of things. But we are trying to fix them as we go. Todd is working hard on making sure the social distancing is done. There's a disinfectant at the door. People are, for the most part, wearing masks and stuff, so for now, it's working well. We are now going to check for a security door, or two security doors actually, to get the people to go only where, where Monique is, at the main lobby. So that's our, that's our next step now. The desks are done. So we're just waiting for the permanent glass, protective glass for Monique, but besides that, it's going well. Restaurant patio, so this is going well also, besides a few complaints for, like, neighbors' noise, encroachment, stuff like this. The stuff you would expect that this would create, a few complaints here and there, but we are dealing with them. And the, the neighbors are very good for the, for the restaurants, and the restaurants are also working very good to make sure that everything is being done correctly. So that's, that's running very smoothly also. For bylaw, so aside from the, the ongoing complaints, Todd has been working hard as, as pretty much for the last few months on just the COVID-19 stuff, to make sure here, everything is safe for everybody. So this is, this is what he's doing mostly. And planning, so draft bylaw, so our GIS technician is still working on the mapping, on the schedules. The, for the zoning bylaw itself, it's been put a little bit on hold, because we're working more on the, on the tree clear-cutting bylaw. But we are going to get to that soon. IHA project, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon for site servicing. Cannabis, the, the bylaw was adopted last, well, on July 13. And the information is being shared with, I think, two prospective developers for cannabis. So nothing concrete for now, but we're just, they're looking into it. And that's, that's pretty much it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Something that was taken out, and I know that we need to discuss today, is just going forward on the tree cutting bylaw, and how we plan on moving forward with it. So maybe I'll ask Sarah, maybe just to introduce it a little bit, and maybe we can have a little discussion on how we want to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it was on the agenda. We may as well talk about it with Jacob also in, in the loop here. So we did have a good public meeting on Monday night. So we had quite a few participants that had their Zoom time. And we have lots and lots of comments from the public also. So the planner has gathered them all together, either for or against the tree canopy bylaw. So we just wanted to have an open discussion with council right now to decide on next steps. So we did have the public consultation, like I said, on Monday. But now that we have some more room for availability of having people for a proper public meeting, so we can go up to 50 people, there's also that option for council to discuss, and then exactly whether we want to do any more public consultation. As council knows, Cash is compiling all the comments, and we're going to consider all the comments and commit with a new draft bylaw. So I guess we're just looking for direction from council on what we'd like to do next.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor Manley.
Oops, sorry. Okay, yeah, just a couple things. I'm wondering if we, if we're okay to go with up to 50 people, if we shouldn't, sort of in the next few weeks, put out an invitation for a live, in-person public consultation? If we get more than 50, then maybe we go with two of them, like, two separate, separate ones? I don't know if that's a, that's an issue. The other thing that I would like to say is, is my feeling is that we should not put out another draft until we've completed all the consultations. I just don't want to come back, put out a, a new draft, and then we get a whole bunch of new comments on that or whatever. I would rather get all the public consultation done, and then we can come out with a, with a new draft. That's my thoughts on that.
Just, just on that, I, I guess I disagree a little bit. I would like to see us to come out with a new draft, and then go to a public meeting, circulate that draft, and then come out with a public meeting. I, I mean, I don't know how many more, how much more public input we could get on this current version of the bylaw, to go and have another meeting on the same, with handing out the same bylaw. I just don't see, makes too much sense. That's just my opinion. But I, I think it makes more sense for us to take everything in, sit down, go through the bylaw line by line, make the changes, clarifications, get it back out to the public, and when we can have a decent-sized meeting, I see that, that's what I see. But again, I'll ask the rest of them. Councilor Wentzink?
There's a lot of awareness out there now, so I do agree with Jeff. I think it's a great idea to try to have another public meeting as soon as possible, while all the suggestions that were made are fresh in our minds. There were a lot of good points that were brought forward, and I'm open either way, either to reviewing a revised draft or gathering further information. I think both of those ideas would work.
Thank you. Councilor Noble?
I just wondered if we got public comment now. And again, we had some great ideas on Monday night from both- And again, we had some great ideas on Monday night from both, both ends. But if we could meet as council in live with maybe the GFA as asked, or the OFA, and get the, the people who are going to tell us what could work in common sense. Because a lot of the comments that were even against the bylaw still had things that, you know, this, this is good, you should add this, but you can't do it 15 meters, or you can't do. And hear from the people who it's honestly going to affect. Again, not 100 of them, but if they have the representatives from the organizations, even if it's five or 10 organizations with us right there, and of course, Kasha and everybody that needs to be there, as opposed to just more people with comments. We need some specific ideas at this point.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, I, there's so many different ways we could do that, this. It's difficult. I mean, I, I agree, I agree with Council Manley, I agree with the mayor, I agree with Brenda, and I agree with Joanne. It's one thing for sure, is that, you know, we obviously have to do more public consultation. It's been asked of us, and so I think we've, you know, we need to do that. But I do, I do kind of agree with Council Noble in the sense that we all, reading through those many, many comments, there are a lot of questions in there, and some of which we have yet to answer. I can't think of one of them off the top of my head, but you know, there, there are some unanswered questions. Right. And, and so some investigation behalf of staff may have to be, be done so that we can answer some of these questions, so that they're not ongoing comments. We need to get them answered. And then there are also questions such as the, the 30 meter buffer around, around waterways. You know, that, that appears to be, you know, an official provincial buffer limitation. And yet, it doesn't appear to be acceptable on behalf of the agriculturalists. So I think we're going to need to figure out, you know, get some answers maybe from the province and, and from the agricultural community. Because just because it says 30 meters, if 30 meters isn't practical, well, what is practical? Because it's for, I think as far as we're concerned, there needs to be some, some sort of buffer there. And so I, I guess what I'm saying is, I think we do need to kind of sit down and, and rework some of this stuff before we get back into the public so that we don't have them saying, making the same comments and asking the same questions that we just don't have answers to.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I just think that, you know, if you go through, you know, I went through all the comments, and there's common themes all the way through those comments. And I think those are the things that we need to look at. And if we're going to make change, because you're right, we go to another meeting without any changes with the same bylaw, that we're just going to get the same complaints. I think we got to keep moving it forward and moving the bar a little bit and making some tweaks that will, you know, satisfy some of the people on both sides of the equation. And that's just, again, just my opinion, but I, I think to go back to the public with the same document, I, I don't see that moving the bar any at all. Council Manley.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I'm, I'm just concerned that we don't sort of take two steps forward and one step back type of thing, where we all of a sudden discover that after we've made a, a change and made a new draft, that now we have to go back and, and go to something that we had previously. I just want to be sure that we don't do that. That's all.
Council Massey.
Mute.
Okay, Jock, you're muted. I mean, I kind of like it, but.
So he's in there all the bad thing that was saying about you. Just across all council that, and then to echo Council Manley that, yes, we need to take the comments we got on Monday and then reinsert that in the draft, a new draft version. And then, but the main thing is, we have to take our time. Like, there shouldn't be a rush to do it. We need to do the right thing here. And, and like, some people are not going to be happy with, but at least they'll be satisfied that they had an input or something. So the main thing I want to say is that let's take our time on this. Like, let's give Kasia, Kasia time to, to see if there's any changes. The inquiry, like Karma said, to the ministry, it's already a, a rule that we were trying to reinvent there. There may be something that's already there. Do our research and then, you know, then, but the main thing I'm saying is just take our time. Like, it's very important that we on both sides of the fence, and I think mostly to our agricultural community also. Like, they were upset at some points, and maybe that we don't even need them in there. It's already a law of something else. So anyway, just, I, I know council is, is, is all on side that we need to take our time, I think. Yeah, do it right.
Okay. And I think too, just going back to what Deputy Mayor Williams said, just in regards to, we heard a lot of questions that were asked that night. And, you know, council members, I would encourage you that if you do have those questions, just put them in an email, send them to Kasha. Because again, I just don't want to get to the meeting when we discuss all that stuff and not have answers to those questions. So I'm sure Kasha probably, you know, took note of a lot of those questions. But if there's anything that you see or that you think that we need, let's get, let's get the information out while it's fresh in our minds and get that to Kasha.
Yeah, one last thing, Mr. Mayor. Is Kasha can group, like, the, the comments that were made in the,
She's going to do, yeah.
With the lines, so when we go through them, we're going to have all these things in front of us when we, like, hopefully council will starting on the new draft. Or is that the thing here?
Pardon me?
Is, is it council that's going to be like?
Yeah, she's going to bring it, and then she'll bring all the comments. We'll look at the, the comments, and we'll make changes to the draft as we see appropriate.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, so I, I think that's, that's a good idea that Kasha is going to compile them. Because when I read through those comments, it took me hours, hours and hours. It's, it's so much information. So we will never be able to sit down and actually go through it. But, you know, she'll be able to delete the, the ones that are in common and just condense them down. But if there isn't some, some real structure put to how we're going to handle these, we'll, we'll be there for ages.
Name Jacob.
Yeah, Kasha is working on regrouping all the comments, because most of them are like the, most of them are the same. So she is putting them all together, but she just wanted to show council all the comments so that everybody, like, everybody who did some, some, like, wanted to say something had their input. So she wanted to, to send the whole document. And yes, Deputy Mayor, it did take her hours to go through those comments, hours and hours. And she is regrouping everything. So it will be more simpler when we are working on the next, on, on the bylaw and modifying the bylaw. Because we will see like an actual number, like this complaint came 10 times, and this one seven times. So we will know which are, which are more common. So yes, she is going to regroup everything. It'll be a lot simpler to go through the next time, for sure. She just wanted you to see the whole, the whole document, the whole thing to, to, to show that we are working on it. Yeah.
And, and I think that was important. Thank you.
Final comment, Council Wensing.
That's what I was going to say. I think the staff should be commended for the work they've done on this. And they are hearing from council that we want to be transparent. We want all the information. So it's very much appreciated that she addressed the concerns we've had in the past. So I think they've done a great job.
And also, just on that, just, I've had lots of compliments about the meeting the other night, that people were happy that they got to, you know, get their, say their, say their piece. And I think it went really well. So again, yeah, kudos to staff on that. Okay, we are going to have a motion that I read a long time ago, but it was to accept the report of the building bylaw and planning 2020 work plan. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Okay, I have a motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Council Manley, that the committee, the whole received staff report number PW 202016, the Director of Public Works 2020 work plan.
Thank you. I guess the first one is work plan update. So COVID-19, everyone's giving you little updates on COVID-19. As you know, during, during our, the height of the issue, Public Works, all the outside workers were still at work, self-isolating. We returned to the office late May, and as of July 16th, our facilities are open. We don't get that many visitors from the public, but as of July 16th, our facilities were roads and fleet. So we've started some work on, work related to the capital program. So for example, starting tomorrow on Concession Road 6, we're going to, going to be replacing some large diameter cross culverts. So don't go to Concession Road 6. Six between County Road 34 and Dorney Road will be closed. Weed harvester, we've purchased a new motor for weed harvester. So we now have two motors. So if we do have an issue with the motor, it'll be a short or reduced downtime. And, and had provided you an update on where it is, we're actually removing weeds. One of the backhoes out of our Kenyon Yard has suffered a major engine failure. I'm told it's similar to an engine failure that occurred last year or two years ago. While it's an older backhoe, it's still required for winter control operations. Our newer backhoe is actually tasked to a snow route. So we don't have any other way to, to load trucks. So we still need that, that older backhoe. I think this highlights a need for a comprehensive fleet management report for you. And I am going to be working on that in conjunction with my review of winter control operations. So sometime fall, hopefully you'll get reported about our fleet, where the issues are, what our needs are, and a plan to perhaps move, move that way. Water and sewer. So in late July or early, or sorry, late June, early July, both of our local conservation authorities issued a level one boil, or level one low water condition. That's declared when flows and rivers are less than 70% of their normal summer low flow condition, or when precipitation has been less than 80% of average. And I mean, we went an extended period with heat and, and little precipitation. It means that users are asked to voluntarily reduce consumption by 10%. It mostly impacts our well water users. The piped water system here in Alexandria and Maxville draws from Mill Pond. And the elevation in Mill Pond is controlled by dams, and there's no issue with quantity or quality. I guess the boil water advisory event for the Maxville water system. I could go over and over what happened. We still haven't found the culprit. We have physically isolated the section of the water main that was problematic. We've sent, we've sent down swabs through that water main. There was a little bit of dirt, but there was nothing inside the water main that the swab brought out. So we're still dealing with that. That section of water main is still isolated physically from the rest of the distribution system. We continue to do all of our tests on the distribution system. There are no issues. We are reviewing operational procedures related to water transfer, i.e. when we send water from Alexandria to Maxville, the levels in the tank at, in Maxville, and those sorts of things. So we're reviewing that. On drainage, I guess one issue is several, well, probably maybe years ago, council that asked for a draft engineer's report on the Fowler-Denny drain, which is near Glen Robertson. We have received a draft of that, a draft of that engineer's draft report. It is required that you have a public meeting to review that draft and make a decision. But I think we're going to wait until public meetings can occur in public again, for you to consider that, that report. With respect to rare and waste collection, I think I had mentioned to you the possibility of North Dundas bringing us their recyclables. After a staff review and discussion, North Dundas has decided to seek other options. And on electronic recycling, the Electronic Producers Recycling Association has now replaced the Ontario Electronic Stewardship. And they're accepting a larger variety of electronic devices, resulting in an incremental improvement in our diversion rate. Alexandria Water Treatment Plant remains on schedule. We're moving ahead. Preparation work for the Mill Pond water main relining has begun, and I think we are going to start construction the week of July 22. That doesn't make any sense, but I think the week of July 27. The Creek Row Bridge is out to tender. It closes tomorrow, and we'll be bringing a report to you at your next council meeting to award that tender. And we are gearing up to start our work on Front Street East, River Road, and Concession Road 6. That's it, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Council Wensing.
I had a couple of questions for you, Doug. Just wondering if there's plans for a hazard waste collection in the fall? And I wondered as well, what was happening with Marlborough Street in Maxville, where there's a lot of problems around a drain?
Okay, so related to hazardous waste. So I understand that I think Council Noble, you had requested if Linda could make it to the meeting tonight, or today.
Or, or Monday.
I couldn't reach her, so she will be, she will, well, knock on wood, she will be on there Monday. I believe we are planning a session in the fall for hazardous waste.
August 1st.
August 1st. We just got it in the mail today.
Thank you, Brenda.
Okay, I don't know why I had September in my mind, but okay. But certainly Linda will be able to provide you additional information on that. With respect to Marlborough Street, we do have a solution that would basically install us a localized catch basin at the low spot to go into the main stormy. That being said, in your multi-year capital construction plan, you have a large amount of money identified for sidewalk work in Maxville, particularly Marlborough Street in 2021. Now, I, I need to discuss with the treasurer and perhaps you how set, if you will, that multi-year or 10-year capital plan is. Because if you're going to invest, I think the budget number I saw was $150,000 for sidewalks along Marlborough Street. If you're going to invest that amount of money in a year, it doesn't make a lot of sense to try and put a Band-Aid on a, a small issue right now.
Right.
Said, I'm open entirely to, to what council wants, but I do also need to talk with what, what that future allocation really means. Like, is it just on a piece of paper? Or is it council's intention to truly try to fund that, that project in the but there is money in the current year to do that, and we know what it is we need to do.
Okay. Well, it's been an area of concern, and I would see it as making more sense to address the concern prior to adding this, redoing the sidewalks.
Okay.
Great. Go ahead. Council Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, Doug, you mentioned about concession 6, and that they're going to be putting culverts in, and the road's going to be closed. Is that correct?
The road will be closed from County Road 34 to Dorney Road. Yes.
Okay. How is the public being notified about that?
So I believe it will be on our webpage, and we've sent, so we've sent a notice to emergency services. So emergency services, no. So we've sent a notice to emergency services. So emergency services, no. I believe that we are going to be posting that on our Facebook page, but I'd have to I'd have to double check with Zoe on that.
Okay, I. A lot of people don't read, aren't on Facebook, unfortunately, and and that's a concern. I I wonder if it wouldn't be worth our while if that section of that road is going to be closed, that we let at least the residents that live in along that road, if we dropped something in their mailbox so that they knew that the road was going to be closed. I know that that was done. When Mallian was working on the on the on the sixth there or whatever. So I think it might be a nice gesture or whatever to do that. I'm just also wondering about signage sort of at each at each end of that and how that's going to look.
Do duly noted.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just back to Marlboro for a second, if you don't mind. I'm just wondering, you you mentioned sort of one one fix on Marlboro. But from what I know of Marlboro Street. It is a problem from the south end at Mechanic Street. Where the gravel washes away every time there's a rainstorm. And has actually caused sort of is physically dangerous when that happens because there's huge crevices. There's problems midway down the street with catch basin that's way too high. I think that's probably when you're talking about. And it doesn't collect water unless there's a flood of it. And then there's there are problems either even further north up to Fair Street where the sidewalk, the road is so high and the sidewalk is so low that the water doesn't go anywhere. It it doesn't flow to the catch basin because the lowest part is the sidewalk. And so I I really think this entire stretch of roadway needs a complete solution. And even though I would, I myself, I'm sure you and and most certainly the residents would like to see a solution this summer and have been promised one. I I I don't think a Band-Aid is a good idea because the whole, I mean. The, I'm not sure that really those those areas can be fixed without without doing the sidewalks, to be honest with you. And 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 I would really hate to see, you know, one problem solved and there still be other existing problems there. It just wouldn't make any sense.
I agree with Karma.
So I don't I don't know if you can, if you have thoughts on that, Doug, or if you need to look at it again. I don't know, but it's 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 pretty bad.
We get a lot of complaints along that street.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So what has, so I don't I don't have any history. I don't know if there's been previous complaints prior to the construction. But basically what happened is part of the the water main project, the elevation of the road came up substantially. Say eight to ten inches. And so now what you have is the road is at a higher elevation than the boulevard area. And in places at a higher elevation than the sidewalk. And so catch basins were adjusted to catch the water from the road. Because that's their primary function is to really catch water from the road. But now water from the sidewalk or the boulevard or indeed the private property can't make it to the to the catch basis. So that's the basic problem. So Karma, you you had it exactly right. The road elevation came up. So while we can address individual problems, the I think the the solution is to redo the sidewalk. And part of that may mean that we also have to do something to that boulevard. I know a lot of people or some people have requested that it remain granular, and that's what it is right now. But because it's granular and the road is higher than the sidewalk. Each individual driveway acts, if you will, like a dam. And so you get water building up behind each driveway. And gravel being gravel when it rains, gravel washes away. So eventually you're going to have large ruts in in the granular boulevard. And it's already showing at the top of the hill right at Mechanic Street. So at the top of the hill, we've placed cold mix to fill those holes for now. But I think the solution is you either pave it. And if you pave it, people are going to park there. Or you might want to put in a curb so and then grass it. Because if you just put grass in, people are going to park on it and then it's going to be back to gravel again eventually. Well, it'll be back to the sand and whatnot. But if you put in a curb, you'll prevent people from parking on that boulevard. But I I don't think you need to make a decision about that right now because that's a twenty twenty one budget item, and it's only it's not actually a real budget just yet.
For the comments, Counselor Noble.
I just had two questions for you, Doug, if you don't mind. I thought we had or we had already been working on a fleet need study.
We we may have. I have not asked staff like Zoe or or Michelle or anyone whether they've got anything on that, and I don't know if my predecessor worked on it.
Thank you. Just don't want you to have to do work if it's already done or even half done. Because not much has changed, I'm sure, in the last couple of months. And then the other question I had for, I'm curious about North Dundas because I thought, pardon the the phrase. That I thought they were kind of hot and heavy to send their stuff to us. So just wondering what happened there.
I got a price.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, that that's basically it. We did a very, I'll call it a high level financial analysis. And it it was not favorable for them at this point in time.
It's not like we don't need them or it's not worth it for us to to take them on then.
But yeah, I think it's more just a question of that we have to too often, we when we had customers before, we were the ones losing money. It was costing North Glengarry taxpayers. So when you try to charge out what it really costs, but for that service, i- it's a mind blowing number. So you know, I think it's just about us looking after our own taxpayers. Any other, any further questions? Okay, seeing none. I have a motion to accept the Director of Public Works twenty twenty work plan. All those in favor? Motion's carried. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. Moving on to, I have a resolution moved by Counselor Noble, second by Counselor Manley. That the committee of the whole receives staff report number PW twenty twenty seventeen. Update on Creek Road Bridge, July twenty twenty for information purposes only. Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I would have liked to have brought to you a report on award of the tender. It was supposed to close, I think, late last week, but contractors asked for a one week extension given issues with COVID nineteen, etc. So the tender doesn't actually close until tomorrow. So at the committee, at the council meeting next week, you'll have a report to recommend award, assuming everything goes okay. So I thought I'd just give you a quick report on some of the issues, not issues, but maybe attributes to the design that may be of interest to committee members. I guess the first one is the general arrangement and alignment. I think you are all aware that it had been requested that we improve the the S curve at at the structure. And to do this, we're actually completely replacing the bridge and removing the bridge slightly to the north. So it won't get rid of that curve, but it'll certainly help getting rid of that curve. And so we are working with the local property owners to transfer land. And essentially it'll be a a net zero land transfer. Structure width, we are increasing the clear width of the structure to five point five meters. So in a pinch, that is actually enough for two lanes of traffic, if you will, although there's not much traffic on that road. But it certainly will help to get agricultural equipment across the crossing. There's also five meters for the railing on each side. With the railing, we are replacing, well, it's a brand new structure, so we're not going with a concrete railing. We're going with a steel, it's called, I think it's called a Thrive Beam. It looks like a steel beam guide rail, but instead of two two little things, there's actually three of them. We have a couple of structures across our municipality that have this type of steel railing. I mean, it's not anything beautiful to look at, but it's very economical. It has a low capital cost. And it's very maintainable. So if it parts of it get damaged, it's very easy to replace. I talked about the land acquisition and disposal. We are relocating some Bell utilities and in fact burying the Bell utility. So that's a an incremental improvement to Bell. Unfortunately, we we have to pay half of the cost, but it's still an improvement. And as part of the crossing, we're actually increasing the span of the bridge. And so we're making improvements to the river, greater flows in the river during flood events. And we may be adding things like river stone or something like that. I have heard that with respect to the existing railing on the structure, there there's some engraving on that existing railing. That shows the contractor, Ebert Prey, out of Saint Eugene, Ontario, as well as the Reeve at the time, Mr. McCrimmon. And there's been some discussion about possibly salvaging that part of the concrete. So I just wanted to bring that up for council to to maybe think about, is this something that you do want? If so, I can get pricing from our contractor to be. And then what it is, what do you want to do with that railing section? So in terms of financial implications, I've included in my package a the engineer's estimate of probable cost, which I think is around one point one five million dollars. And indeed, you have, you have a total of two point two point two eight million. And so there's going to be no budget issue. This project is, I think, about eighty three percent third party funded. Under the Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program. So that's it that I've got for Creek River Bridge.
Thank you. Just what's everyone's feeling on the railing on the existing structure. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The the individuals that are have brought up the the possibility of salvaging this. Are they, is there a plan as to what would happen with the these slabs of concrete to do? Is there? Like, I'm assuming that something would have to be done with them if they were to be salvaged. And is it members of the public or or members of the family or what?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm 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 looking to you for those sorts of answers, I guess. Only heard that someone somewhere like to sell sections of railing. So I mean, there is a cost to really just moat and move them somewhere. So that's one cost. But if it becomes, if it's going to be a township asset and quote on display somewhere. That's a different ballgame. So I mean, it's not a very big deal for the contractor to cut these out and put them on someone's yard if they really want them. But if it's going to be publicly owned, that's a different matter. So I really don't know who's asking for it.
Can we maybe just get a short report at another meeting? Just outlining kind of what the cost of this would be and where we, you know, what what the plan would be for it and maybe find out who's asking for it. So that, you know, we have a little bit more information. That way we can just maybe move forward with something. Counselor Manley.
Yeah, it does. It really doesn't look like they're in very good shape. From the pictures that that we're in the report. Barely read barely read them. So maybe there's somebody that wants them for their front lawn or whatever. If that's the case, I have no problems with that. It doesn't cost too much to get rid of them.
Counselor Noble.
Yeah, I spoke to the families that are next door just because they do, they do things on the bridge. They take pictures on the bridge. The picture that's in our reports, the little it's a little bit of the shade because it is, it is clear enough when you're there in person and you'll notice the anniversary just passed. But this isn't like a post on a previous bridge, which was an easy fix and that and the family could display it on their lawn. They said if it wasn't going to be a lot of money, absolutely, then, you know, they could pay and they could do something with it. But Doug gave me a four figure estimate as to what it would cost to cut this out. And again, yeah, unless you make some sort of big display out of it and you do something with it. These could easily get broken as you try to take it down because it's just cement. So that's what I would be afraid of, but again, it's not something we had to decide to decide today, but the Bertray construction, not so much, but they were kind of interested in saving the date.
Well, I guess maybe just if we can find out how much it is and maybe out of the goodness of the contractor's heart when they're taking it down, they could just cut it out nicely and lay it on their lawn for them. Okay, so that's the end of your report, Doug.
Yep.
Okay, so I've a motion to accept the Creek Road Bridge update. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on. I have a motion moved by Counselor Noble, second by Counselor Manley. That report PW eighteen twenty twenty Public Works Waste Collection Contract be received. And further that council approved an extension to the waste collection contract to GRS sanitation. At an annual price increase of one point seven five percent over the current contract price. And further that council approve a two-year extension from August first twenty twenty to July thirty first twenty 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 two to be confirmed and renewed each year with the possibility of extending based on circumstances at the time. And further, that council directs staff to incorporate stipulations into the contract that are flexible to accommodate the regional waste management study and the transition to full producer responsibility or blue box. Doug.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So July thirty first, our existing for waste collection expires. GRS sanitation has indicated they'd be willing to extend their contract. And I won't say everything's perfect with the contract, but because everyone has issues in contracts, but they are providing a a a good service to the municipality and staff would be in favor of extending the contract. We do not recommend going out to tender because there is a lot of uncertainty in in waste collection. In in SDG, we have a regional waste management review that's looking at waste collection issues, and that report is supposed to be available to you in the first quarter of twenty twenty one. And it may recommend a centralization or regionalization of waste collection. And so I don't think we want to get tied into a long term contract. So that makes it difficult to get long term, more competitive pricing. And then we also have the uncertainty with the blue box responsibility. So we are basically recommending to extend year by year, but for at least two years. To GRS. So in terms of the financial and implications. Our current value of the contract, so July, August one twenty nineteen to July thirty one twenty twenty was four hundred and fourteen thousand five hundred and seventy dollars. And so applying the one point seven five percent increase, next year would be four twenty one eight twenty five. And the subsequent year would be four twenty nine two oh seven. Within their original tender submission, they had included only a one point five percent annual increase. Typically, you you could say go to the CPI, but with COVID nineteen, I think. I don't know how to read those tables, but I think that number may actually be a negative number, which is. Uh, I don't know how to read those tables, but I think that number may actually be a negative number, which is probably not indicative of reality. Um, but typically it's around two percent. And so that's why staff are suggesting one point seven five percent for those uh two future years.
Hey, Counselor Massey?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh. I know we are, uh, I know like GRS are giving us a good service, uh, given that they had, they included a one point five annual increase. And the stating the fact that we are handling taxpayers' money too, so we not just stick to one point five? Like, uh, just giving point twenty-five away for no reason. Kinda, I don't feel right with that.
Anybody? I'm fine, I'm fine with the one point seven five. I. A- as the, as he stated before, the cost of living is generally at two percent and uh everybody deserves to make a living and the expenses of. Of fuel and uh, I mean, the fuel's been good price right now, but. It skyrocket again. And uh, so I I think for the sake of this contract and the fact that we have uh. An extension to do on August first, I'm satisfied with it. Any other members of council, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Uh, thank you. Is it, did they ask for the one point seven five? Or did they ask for the one point five?
One point seven five.
No, they asked for one point five.
Okay, so.
One point five. Okay, go ahead, Doug. Explain it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so we've, we've exchanged emails. Um, in uh in our email exchange, uh, the contractor had initially re- referenced. Cost of living. Um, but with COVID nineteen, that's now an a negative number, which I don't think is. What he was talking about. Um, but given that it's typically around two and he incorporated one point five in his annual increase. I I suggested to split the difference and go with one point seven five percent.
I see the one point five percent uh Counselor Massey was from the previous contract. So he wasn't asking for the one point five. He was asking for cost of living. So this is the, this is the middle of the road for.
Well, it says that the contractor included a one point five annual increase, increase in the contract. That's what I'm reading. I don't know, and maybe I'm wrong there. And I do, I do understand that what you're saying, but. The fact is that some years the uh. Cost of living is one point three. Like, if I go back to the negotiation with the unions, we will fight hard to the nail. To go down a quarter percent and here we're just giving it away. I don't, maybe it's just me there, but. It's, it's not our money to pay with.
Counselor Wensing?
Yes, it's it's just usual. Sorry. No, this is not a usual year. I don't think it's unreasonable for an increase. It's an excellent service that they've provided. And it's still for review each year. So I agree with what Jamie had described as a reasonable increase.
Anything further? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Well, um, my thinking is. Uh, we should give them what they asked for. Uh, so. If we're not clear on what they asked for, we should ask them what they uh are looking for. Uh, and um, and and I I don't, I agree with shock. Uh, it's not a good idea to give. To give out more money than anyone is asking for.
I figured.
Can you uh, Doug, can you explain how this all went down, just so everybody is clear? What, what exactly did he ask for? Because it makes it sound like that was the previous contract. So what did he ask for?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Chairman, the one point five percent was the previous contract. So that contract was issued in two thousand and fourteen or two thousand and fifteen. And it was one point five percent for each of the years from two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, whatever it was, up until now. That contract expires July thirty-first. What he asked for was he would be willing to extend. Um, but he would like cost of living. That's the words he used. Okay, but because of COVID nineteen. That number is actually a negative number. And so really, he's not asking that he wants his contract reduced. What he's really asking for is he wants around two percent. Um. Given that his prior contract was one point five percent every year and cost of living was two. I made the. I'm not going to use the word arbitrary, but the. I'm recommending to you that we go with one point seven five percent. Does that help?
Can you, can, uh, Mr. Mayor, can you ask them, if you call them back and say, okay, listen, counsel? At least try to get it one point five if he is okay with that. Because like, everybody knows fuel went down, lots of stuff went down. And I do understand it's a COVID year, but that's ten thousand dollars a year. That point five, that point two five, we're not. So like, you know, ten thousand bucks, we can fix something with that. But anyway, just try, can we do that? Try it or?
Or vote on it?
Yeah, there we go.
And it's actually one thousand and fifty-four dollars, Chuck, not ten thousand.
No, four, four hundred and twenty thousand times point zero two five?
Oh, that's two point five percent. It's point.
No, that's.
Two five.
Two five.
It's zero zero two five.
Okay, you're wrong. Okay, so anyway.
Okay, so I'm going to uh call the vote. Wait, we have a motion in front of us. Would anybody like me to read the motion again? So I have a. All those in favor of the motion? One, two, Counselor Noble?
As is.
As is, yes. Okay, so motion is defeated?
Very.
Then now we can ask Doug to go.
Yeah.
Back and just make sure one point five is okay.
Well, that's, we're not, we don't go back. We, we, we're gonna pass a resolution saying that's what we're passing.
Okay, so now in other words, we will.
Excepted or.
Contract at one point five.
Right. So, uh. Sarah, do you uh want to, are we drafting up another resolution?
Um, so we have to bring this back to council on Monday anyway.
Okay, just bring it back to council.
We can bring it to council on Monday um at the one point five. And see if it goes rather than bring it, because we'd have to bring it back to another committee of the whole. If the, if the motion's defeated as it is, so it'd be better just to bring it to council at the one point five.
Sure.
If uh GRS is in agreeance with that, if Doug can get them to agree.
Okay, sounds good. Perfect. Okay, uh, so that one is defeated. Okay, moving on to. I have a resolution moved by Counsel Noble, seconded by Counsel Manley. That the committee of the whole receives staff report number FD twenty twenty zero seven. The Fire Chief's twenty-point work plan update. Welcome, Matt.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Uh, very quick uh report for this month. Not much has really changed. I'll just outline. Uh, few of the, I guess, progresses and challenges that uh we're facing with the fire service. So. Um, communication system remains ongoing, uh, and that's as a result of the COVID and just not being able to receive our equipment. So. As soon as uh the the equipments received, and this is solely for the paging. Uh, not the actual uh communication, then we'll be moving forward on that. So uh the vendor is prepared uh to move forward on that. Um, train facility, uh, the project has resumed. Um, the engineers submitted the final um plans for it. And that'll be forwarded to the building department for their final approval as as we move through. And ensure that it's uh meeting all the standards uh as approved by the uh engineer. I'm currently just ongoing, this is an ongoing item of always just reviewing yearly of our uh our bylaws. Such as even with the automatic gate agreements with Champlain and North Stalwart. Uh, just sure that um it is favorable and still acceptable for um the township. And everything is still meeting those uh those requirements. So we're just um. No real changes to bring forward at this point to council, but I'm just reviewing it to ensure that everything is uh. Is uh, is, is working um effectively. Fire permits uh uh in the report is just the updated numbers uh for the current uh. Um, we currently have roughly around thousand um sixty some uh permits. Uh, we did uh did impose a fire ban as everyone is aware on July sixth. That was just to uh due to the ex- the extreme dry conditions that we've been experiencing. And uh I did lift the band on July twentieth. Um, just as conditions improve and uh hopefully they do continue to improve. Uh, we do know that it is still, uh, the water levels um are low. However, the, we do look at. Um, various other different aspects such as the fuel loads and so forth uh for the areas. Uh, and at this time, it is uh still a high risk, uh however, not uh enough to to put a fire ban in place. Just to kind of touch on the fire ban, um, just for residents, they are, um, so anybody who does have a permit. Uh, it is accessible to them to know when the fire ban is on or not. Uh, we have put out signage this year. Um, that was very effective and um we didn't have many complaints um for the, because of the signage and. Uh, the new some that's, that's been very effective. Uh, as well as anybody that does have a permit can go on to the um fire permits uh website. And the, the level of uh rating is updated continuously as conditions change. Hopefully, we don't uh have to go into another uh fire ban uh for uh the manure uh of the summer season, but uh we'll continue uh to monitor that. In terms of uh COVID updates, uh no changes to the tiered response for medical um response. However, we've had a couple of incidents with it. However, our our procedures were effective and um. Uh, all the P proper PP was utilized and our members do feel very safe in terms of uh responding. So that's a very positive aspect. Uh, um, for us. Our training does continue to resume uh and paramount safety for our members is uh and for their family members as it is uh. You know, they are being exposed, potentially exposed. So we are taking all the measures uh in place for that. Um, one of the items is uh that uh goes through the uh Fire Marshal's Office is um fire inspections. And with the uh vulnerable occupancies such as the nursing homes, retirement homes and hospitals. We have, um, it is a requirement that we do uh conduct the inspections. These are yearly inspections that are mandatory. Um, so inspections will be conducted. There was a communication that was developed by the Fire Marshal's Office. And uh we will be working with the the uh vulnerable occupancies uh to get these inspections done. Through the code, uh, there is different measures that we can take and we will be ensuring the ultimate safety of residents within those uh those occupancies. In terms of fleet, uh, this is uh an item that I would just want to bring forward to the council's attention is uh. Uh, we, you know, I am seeing an increased pressure in terms of the budget, then that's as a result of um. Some fleet issues that we've experienced this year. Um. We've um, we've established a proper maintenance uh procedure on all our fleet and to ensure that um our fleet is operational. Uh, one of our pumpers did experience a uh a pump failure, so it had to begin for for some changes. And some updating as well as uh the safeties. We've gone to a third-party um. Uh supplier uh who is now conducting um what I like to say, very effective safeties and that are uh that do meet the the standards, which is is uh. Brings a little bit more confidence to me at the end of the year of of saying that our fleet is operational ready. So. Um, I am keeping uh an eye on it. But uh just as an update, um, it is something I am monitoring uh and will keep uh council uh up to date. Uh, and that's pretty much uh concludes my report. Mr. Mayor?
Hey, thank you, Chief. Are there any questions, Counsel Noble?
Hi, um, two quick things and a question. Um, the signs were awesome. I had a lot of compliments on those. You can't miss them. And so you can't say you didn't see it on Facebook or the website. Um, just wondering. The aerial truck where it is, um, and I'm assuming it's delayed because of the fun we're going through. And then I don't. I don't remember what happened with your decision about where you guys were gonna get your gear cleaned.
So through you, Ms. Mayor, um. So the aerial truck is still in auto. It's some service. Uh, I computer uh continuing to communicate with the um. The broker. Uh, as a result, we're, our hands are kind of tied. Um, at this point, um, we've only uh just provided a deposit for the um. Uh, for the aerial. So uh at this point, uh until they remove uh this vehicle out of service, that's whenever um. We'll have the opportunity to put it through our own maintenance uh and testing. Um. Until then, I'll provide a report. I'll be coming uh providing a report as well to council in terms of um. The sale of the tanker in uh at Apple Hill. That'll be forthcoming at the most likely next uh community of the whole meeting. And in terms of bunker gear cleaning, um, we did show a vendor that we utilize is in Gatno. Um, they've modernized and they provide a next source to us even through COVID as purely it wasn't working out. Uh, so they've actually. Uh, they're sending a truck out to um to our station and providing them a exception cost to us uh in terms of delivery. So. All our gear is being cleaned. There's challenges um as we are seeing uh some gear failing. Um, and that's just uh just as a result of either normal use or there is some potential warranty issues that I'm going through with uh some of the procurements for um. Some of our suits. So there are some challenges with suits and given, obviously, this is a, you know, a primary aspect of um safety for our members. It is something that uh. I take care, a lot of uh interest in and make sure that the members are equipped uh efficiently.
Thanks.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to talk about the burn bylaw for a second, Matt. Um. One of uh the suggestions that was made in the many, many comments we had on the tree cutting bylaw was. That it's awkward having agricultural burns dealt with in the burn bylaw. And then having a separate bylaw dealing with the other aspects of clear cutting. And um. I'm just wondering, it's just a question, something maybe you wanna mull over. There, there, there was a suggestion that. That we actually embed the the rules with regards to agricultural burning. In the tree cutting bylaw. And so I I think it it's something we need to think about. Uh, because and and many of the comments associated with the uh tree cutting bylaw have to do with. Um, concerns over the shortened burning season. So we're gonna have to talk about it anyway. Um, so I just wanted to, just to bring it up so that you can be thinking um about whether. Where the best place is to have those regulations set. Um, uh, and and where ultimately they belong and what we're best.
Excellent. Um, I'll be like, yeah. Uh, I I review the meeting as well and uh note a few as well in terms of uh some of the. The comments towards the uh that you can be by law and I'll work with uh Jacob to ensure that uh there is consistency and uh. We'll, we'll definitely move forward on that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, I have a motion to accept the Fire Chief's uh twenty twenty work plan update. All those in favor? Motion is carried. So Matt, it's, I mean, you have your Fire Chief suit on. I, yeah, is it just on top as the whole suit on? Come on.
Do you want, do you want me to stand or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, please don't. Okay, I have a motion moved by Counsel Wensing, seconded by Counsel Noble. There being no further business discussed, the meeting was adjourned. At four twenty-nine PM.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Committee reports?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I jumped over that. My, thank you. Okay, so uh Counsel Massey, Raising Region Conservation Authority?
Yeah, we have a, we had a report the middle of June and I think uh we all got the email from the uh, the, the secretary there that the. Stating the main points and that's it.
Maxwell Manor update, Counsel Mas.
Yeah, same thing there. I missed the last meeting, but uh I think everybody's aware that uh Bernard is uh. Submitted his resignation at the end of, for the end of this year. So we're going into a process of uh selecting a new uh CEO or whatever it's called, man. That's pretty much it.
Thank you. Glengarry Pioneer Museum, anything to report, Counsel Noble?
Yeah, we had a Zoom meeting last week, so the museum is open for now. It has to be by reservation. Uh, but facilities are open. Uh, there are a couple of groups that are meeting. They are trying. To do a couple of events later on, so we keep, keep our eyes open for that. And of course, there'll be ones that are in. To do a couple of events later on, so we keep, keep our eyes open for that. And of course, there'll be ones that are in the fall when hopefully things. Uh simmer down. And again, always looking for volunteers and board members. So if you have a little extra time.
Thank you. Uh Glengarry Archives update. Uh so we haven't had a meeting, but uh. Things are progressing quite rapidly. They're already starting to move uh things over. And uh, yeah, so we're looking pretty good for uh September, uh late September opening. So it's uh pretty exciting.
Everything. Everything, everything has, everything has now moved over to the archives.
Okay, that's great.
It was all completed. It was completed yesterday. So.
Okay, that's great. So uh look forward to that in the near future of a, of a big grand opening with less than fifty people.
Unless we have it outside.
Yeah. Arts, Culture and Heritage Update, Counselor Manley.
Yeah, nothing, nothing to report. We did not have a meeting at the beginning of, the beginning of July, so.
Uh County Council update. Uh I know that uh Deputy Mayor was away on vacation and I was at the dentist. Uh do you, do you have anything to report on? Okay, nope. Friends of the Trail update, Counselor Wentz, anything to report?
Yes, just that there's members attending a Zoom webinar on reducing risk exposure on the trails and planning for the AGM.
Okay, excellent. Community Development Committee, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Uh yeah, so the Community Development Committee uh remains very active because we have a couple of important files we're dealing with. Uh Anne Leduc referred to the uh the development and marketing plan, which we currently have. Consultants that are, are working on that. Uh the uh, the community and develop, the community. Development Committee is uh, is, is very active and involved in this. And we had a workshop with the consultants. That kickstarted the public consultation. So we're looking forward to seeing this uh project. Continue moving forward over the summer and fall. The other uh important thing that's going on in this committee is we've established a working group. That is called the Alexandria Lagoon Working Group. Uh it's comprised of very active uh. Members of the public who are very engaged in the process of developing a plan for lobbying. Different levels of government to, to fund this project. As we all know, the lagoon project is shovel-ready. Uh we, we, we need to get it funded before we can make it happen. And then we can. Get uh our, our marketing and development plan underway and, and see some development in North Glengarry. The, the, I had a good conversation today uh with Amanda Samard, who is actively, uh of course, she's our, our MPP. And she has committed to actively working with us um in order to, to, you know, find out what kind of uh. Funding might be out there and give us whatever help she can. And of course, our MP Francis Drew is also. Uh doing the same for us. So we're in the midst of developing this lobbying plan and you'll be. You'll be hearing more about it as, as it, as it unfolds. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so if there's nothing else, yeah, Deputy uh Counselor Massey.
Sorry, yeah, Mr. Mayor. Uh just uh while we're talking about Main Street and the, the sewer. Is there any news from the counties? I know you guys both are there for the Main Street, like the, what's, what's up with the plan and everything?
There's been an ongoing plan that's uh, they, they have consultants. We've been working on it for the last uh six months, I believe. If you remember, they were here do, asking people questions on the streets and stuff. So there's an ongoing plan that uh is, that will be coming forward.
I just, I get a little bit of comments, but it's getting rough, so.
It, it's getting rough though, but uh, you know, we're not gonna rush into something. We. We have one opportunity to change what the downtown Main Street looks like. It's looked the same for, for uh fifty, sixty years. Uh so we're gonna take our time and get something done. We're hoping to have uh, if there's funding that comes forward in maybe twenty twenty one. Or twenty twenty two to get this uh, to get it completely.
Yeah, just wanted to, thank you.
Yep, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, and just, just in addition to that, I've, I've been involved in their, in their meetings with the consultants and. Uh I, I really think that the plan for Main Street is going to be fantastic. I think the, the residents are really going to like it. And it involves uh the development of Mel Square and. Um all kinds of opportunities for, you know, pedestrians and greenery and uh. I, I think it's gonna be an, an excellent plan.
Good, thank you.
Okay, there's nothing further. I have a motion moved by Counselor Wentz, seconded by Counselor Noble, that there being no further business discussed. The meeting was adjourned at four thirty five PM. All those in favor? I'm assuming you're in favor, Counselor Manley?
In favor.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for uh joining us for the meeting. Thank you to staff and uh thanks to everyone who joined us live on Facebook. So have a great evening and. Enjoy your weekend coming up. Thank you.
You too.
Good night.